Yes.
Yep, it's gone.
Jump on.
Just wait, just wait.
See, it'll work, it'll work.
Lift it outside.
Hey.
Not till nine.
Wait, hey, wait till I got a sale coming up here. It better be done by 12 o'clock because I got a sale and I'm in the bed live.
Today at 12? Yeah.
What do you, what do you have buying?
Some guy sold his car.
We'll call over to the Benton County Board of Commissioners' special meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just like the Constitution.
Well, we've got a full audience this morning. That's great to see. Roll call, please, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Schlongen?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Heinen?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
County Board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that the viewers can hear you. County Board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the Board's Chair's consent before adjusting the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the Board Chair. As we begin today, please turn your cell phones off and/or on vibrate, please. Thank you. Open forum, is there anybody in the audience that would like to adjust the county board with an agenda that's not on the item?
Anyone to sign up?
Thank you, Monty. Consent item, what do we want to, what would we like to do with consent item one through six?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve items one through six.
I'll second. Mr. Chair, I'd like number five pulled.
Okay.
I'll amend that then to pull five.
I'll amend mine, too.
Okay, so we got amendment to that. So, I'll call the question on one, two, three, four, and six. All in favor, say aye.
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 Proposed, motion carries, number five, Commissioner Pop.
I just want some clarification that this is an addition to the automatic increase. And what was the, the length of the contract that we have with these people? Or is this just, we, do we have a contract that's due at the beginning of 2023? Or they just want an extra 4.6%?
So, we negotiated a contract with them, I'm sorry, I don't have the item in front of me, several years ago, and we've just been amending it year to year to extend it from one year to the next. So, what you have before you is, it's basically saying that contract language we already agreed to, we're going to reserve that and keep that the same, and for next year, these are going to be our prices. So, the prices that you have quoted in front of you on that amendment are what we're going to pay for the next year. It's not, there's an, this is not an additional increase on top of something we already expected.
So, we really don't have like a three-year, a five-year contract with them?
No, at this point, we're, we're just doing amendments from one year to the next.
The only reason I was concerned was because a lot of these vendors and that seem to be, think they can come back to government entities and get an additional 3% to 5% all the time. And I thought maybe this was the case, but evidently it's not, so thanks.
You're welcome.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move to approve item number five.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion as second for item number five. Any further discussion? Now, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, on the item, next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider proposed revisions to the Benton County retail tobacco, tobacco licensing ordinance. Before opening a public hearing, we'll first hear from county staff report. Jaclyn?
Well, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Administrator Hedley.
You know, I see a lot of new faces in the room today, so I'm just going to take a minute to introduce myself. My name's Jaclyn Litfin. I'm our community health administrator for Benton County, and I oversee our public health here. I have with me today Mariah. She's an excellent community health specialist. She's been leading our tobacco work. We're here today to provide a final update on the proposed changes to our county's tobacco ordinance, and we'd really like to thank the Board for your time and previous discussions on this. Following our staff report today in the public hearing, we would like to ask the county Board to consider approval of these proposed changes.
Through this work and within the final proposed tobacco ordinance before you today, we have taken into account feedback and considerations received by county board members at previous Committee of the Whole meetings and from community partners through various work group meetings, and have applied that feedback into the final document within your board packet. Benton County's last update to our tobacco ordinance was back in July of 2019. The Benton County Commissioners increased the legal sales age of tobacco from 18 to 21, also known as T-21. In addition, they voted to put into place minimum price and packaging for cigars, a restriction on price promotions and coupons, prohibited sampling, as well as implemented a required training for retailers, and a minimum proximity to school policy, which really jump-started this work that we are continuing today.
Minnesota is experiencing a youth nicotine epidemic, and we know that health-informed policies play a large role in allowing communities to live a healthier life. The Benton County Tobacco Work Group, which is a group comprised of various sectors such as public health, education, law enforcement, healthcare, and various departments within our agency, convened early in January 2022 to discuss tobacco prevention and control initiatives in our community and our goals as a group. The group, which has met numerous times over the course of the past few months, decided to work on two primary tobacco initiatives, including policy changes and community education, major elements in public health prevention. Tobacco continues to be a leading preventable cause of disease and death in our country, state, and community.
We would like to provide you with a quick update and summary on the most recent language changes within the proposed tobacco ordinance since our last Committee of the Whole meeting in July. We have taken into account feedback and considerations received by county board members and community partners through our various conversations, and have applied that feedback into the proposed changes. Within the board packet is the final proposed Benton County tobacco ordinance that includes updates to definitions and standards to meet state and federal requirements, as well as the other proposed policy changes. Over the next few slides, we are going to give a brief overview of the proposed ordinance changes.
All right, so the first proposed update is to align definitions in our ordinance to meet standard state and federal definitions for tobacco sales and licensings. Updating these definitions within our ordinance to match the state and federal requirements makes it easier for our retailers to understand what's required of them as our county ordinance requirements would then align with the state and federal levels. After we last updated our county tobacco ordinance in July of 19, Governor Walz implemented T-21 in May of 2020, which then increased the legal tobacco sales age from 18 to 21 statewide. This meant that there were changes and updates made to state statute, so therefore we propose that the definitions be updated so their county can be in compliance with state and federal requirements. These definitions can be found in Section 300, subdivisions 1 through 23, and have also been updated throughout the document. In addition to the definition updates throughout the document, we propose adding in language to match state statute regarding the seizure of false IDs. This would allow a licensee to seize a form of identification if there's reasonable grounds to believe that the form of identification has been altered or falsified, or is being used to violate any law. The licensee that seizes the false ID would be required to submit the form of ID to a law enforcement agency within 24 hours of seizing it. The proposed policy change can be found under Section 700, subdivision 2B.
The second proposed change is to cap the total number of licenses issued to tobacco shops at zero, with any currently existing tobacco shops being exempt to this policy change. Benton County currently only licenses one tobacco shop. This language would not allow any other tobacco shops to be licensed by Benton County, and if the existing tobacco shop were to close their business, fails to renew their tobacco license, if they move outside of Benton County, or if their license is revoked, they would no longer be exempt to this policy change. We originally brought this language to the March Committee of the Whole meeting where we proposed a cap on all tobacco retailers. However, we heard the Board's concerns regarding economic impact and limiting the other goods that retailers often bring to our communities, like convenience stores providing food access, for example. So, in the proposed language, you will see changes reflecting our decision to propose a cap on tobacco shops only. The goal of this proposed ordinance change is to limit the number of tobacco retailers in our community who only sell tobacco products to reduce the access and appeal of tobacco products to all Benton County residents, especially youth. With more tobacco retailers in an area, youth are more likely to start using tobacco products, and those who want to quit using tobacco products have a more difficult time quitting. Tobacco product use has started and established primarily during adolescence. Nearly 9 out of 10 adults who smoke cigarettes daily first try smoking by age 18, and 99% first try smoking by age 26. The proposed policy change can be found under Section 400, subdivision 14.
I want to now direct your attention to Section 700, subdivision 3. The goal of this proposed policy change is to reduce the access and appeal of flavored tobacco products, especially to youth. As the tobacco industry has targeted our youth population heavily with flavored tobacco products and youth-friendly flavors. In fact, over 80% of youth ages 12 to 17 who have ever used tobacco products reported that the first product they used was flavored. Additionally, nearly 7 out of 10 youth who are current tobacco users reported that they used a flavored tobacco product. This policy recommendation would prohibit the sale of all flavored products with the exception of any currently existing tobacco shops. Benton County currently only has one tobacco shop that would be exempt from this policy requirement, as long as they meet the criteria outlined in the proposed ordinance. Flavored tobacco products make it easier to start using these products and harder to quit.
The final proposed change is to increase administrative penalties for first and subsequent violations, as well as increase the suspension period. Additionally, increasing the look-back period to match Minnesota statute as outlined on the slide. These proposed changes are in response to Benton County seeing recent increases among non-compliant tobacco retailers, especially as it pertains to underage tobacco sales. The goal of this proposed policy change is to increase compliance among our Benton County tobacco retailers, and to keep tobacco products out of the hands of youth and those under the age of 21. This proposed policy change can be found under Section 1200, subdivision 1.
At this time, Monty, could I mention the postcards here that we have?
Sorry?
Could I mention the postcards that we have here?
That would be fine.
So, we received from our different cities within Benton County, we have 101 youth support postcards, and 50 adult postcards came in. And I'll just quick read off the cities that we had listed. So, we had 49 youth support from Foley, 20 youth support from Sauk Rapids, eight from Rice, two from Royalton, four from Oak Park, one from Pierce, six from St. Cloud, one from Gilman. There were four of our youth postcards that didn't have an address, which is kind of cute. And then we had four from Clear Lake and two from Foreston. On the adult support postcards, we had 13 from Sauk Rapids, four from Rice, 26 from Foley, three from St. Cloud, two from Oak Park, one from Becker, and one from Clear Lake. And all these postcards were in support of the tobacco ordinance proposed changes. And they were specifically looking at flavored tobacco products. All right, well, at this time and on behalf of Benton County Public Health and our Tobacco Work Group, we're requesting that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the recommended proposed changes to Benton County's tobacco retail ordinance. Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thank you. Okay, now we will open the public hearing for comment. If there's anybody in the audience under the age of 18, just please give your name and the school you're from. Who would like to be first?
Yes.
Oh, I'd do that later. After I open the public hearing, then I close it. I got, I got a call in front of me.
Looks like we have a few folks online. I need to unboot. There we go. There we go.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time this morning to come and speak about this ordinance. For those of you that I haven't had a chance to meet yet, Brad Bergstrom, Superintendent at Sauk Rapids Rice Public Schools, and I'm here to talk a little bit about and share some of the experiences we're having in Sauk Rapids Rice Public Schools with regards to tobacco. Like many schools in the county and in the region, public schools are doing a great job of educating students, but we also have some challenges. And one of those is in the area of tobacco, and we are not exempt from dealing with some of the tobacco issues. We have an increasing number of students who are utilizing tobacco, which is a trend we are not very pleased with. And speaking with our high school administration, over 90% of those tobacco cases that we see are students that are utilizing flavored products. And that, again, a grave concern for us. The other piece that I want to talk just a little bit about is, of course, there's the health issues related to the students who are utilizing, but is also impacting and affecting those who are not utilizing those products either. Students are reporting that they have concerns about going to restrooms because of vaping and tobacco product usage there, and they just don't want to be associated with that. And that, again, is causing a concern. Now, are we putting strategies in place to try and correct that? Absolutely. It's, sometimes it's like chasing the proverbial air bubble in the waterbed. Kind of date myself with that comment. So, it's, it's an ongoing piece. And I think the other piece is that when we find students who are utilizing these products, and even when they make a decision that they want to try and quit, it is the flavored products that hook them, and then they have a really difficult time trying to get away from it. And I know of families that are spending lots of money to try and support their child and trying to get away from the use of the tobacco products, and it is a challenge for them. So, it's an ongoing concern. As a superintendent of schools, I want our kids to be getting educated in the best environment possible, and any help that can be provided by the county in helping with this in regards to the use of flavored tobacco products would be greatly appreciated. And thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jennifer Kenning, and I am a student assistance coordinator for the Sauk Rapids Rice School District. So, specifically, I'm a licensed alcohol drug counselor, and I work with the district. I work with students who may struggle with chemical use, whether they get in trouble in the community or on school grounds. I provide education, I kind of work with them toward cutting back on youths quitting. I also meet with students who might just have family or friends that struggle with youths, and so I help support them in that way, and then I provide education. So, I just want to talk for a couple of minutes about some of the things I'm also seeing and working with in the schools. This is my 10th year in the school, and so when I reflect back on the last 10 years and the tobacco that I've seen, the tobacco use with youth, it's, it's changed over the years. So, if I think back to eight, nine, 10 years ago, and what youth was like back then, first of all, it was quite rare. If we were confiscating any tobacco products back then, it was usually chew or cigarettes. And again, it was very few and far between. The amount of times we'd confiscate in a given year, I could maybe count on one hand. The typical tobacco user back then was likely a student who wasn't involved in school, a lot of times a student who was at risk, and maybe had youth going on in the home. Compared to now, again, it's a lot more common, as Mr. Bergstrom was talking about, we're seeing increasing numbers in recent years. And now, there's really no rhyme or reason as to who's using these products. We're seeing both kids who are not involved in school, and then we're also seeing athletes and kids who are involved in activities. We're seeing kids who struggle in school with grades and, and being involved, but we also see kids who are getting straight A's. We see kids who are at risk and maybe don't have support at home, but we see kids who do have support at home. So, really, we're, it's, it's anyone. It's anyone and everyone. And so, as Mr. Bergstrom was talking about too, we know that most kids are using them in the first place because of the flavors that are available. And what happens is that with that initial use, they find a buzz from that. So, they're getting like a buzz or like a mini high. And what happens a lot of the time, too, is that because of mental health concerns being increased in recent years as well, is that they find that buzz as what they describe to me as an escape. So, they find that kind of like as an escape from their problems. And so, what happens is that they use more and more, and it does not take long for that just to become an addiction. And then, then that's when we're seeing them bringing them to school. I've had, in the last couple of years, I've had a couple of students hospitalized from their use of vaping products and the injury that has happened from that on their lungs. And then, I just want to end really quick talking about the flavors. So, again, we know that that's why most kids are trying them in the first place, and the flavors pique their interest and curiosity in trying them. This, we're just starting our fourth week of school, so in the first three weeks of school, I wrote down a couple of the flavors that we've confiscated yet this year. We've confiscated blue raspberry, lemonade, mucho mango punch, and banana ice, and those are the ones that we found already this school year. It's important to note that we do see a number of, a variety of different tobacco products. The largest one would be vaping products, and there actually does exist a tobacco flavor vape juice, but we have never confiscated that. We've never seen the e-juice that's just flavored as tobacco. It's always going to be the fruity flavors that we see. So, I feel that if we were able to put some regulations around that, we would see, number one, we'd see a decrease in youth using them, and we'd see less youth even trying them in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the audience.
I've got some paper for you.
We love paperwork.
You don't have to fill anything else. Commissioners, thank you for hearing us today. My name is Paul Newbar. I'm the Superintendent of Foley Public Schools. You have a document in front of you that is basically data that we collect. We collect all sorts of data on student behavior, and this specific, is specific to tobacco violations that we have seen. The way that you want to look at this, the first bank would be high school data, and the second bank is intermediate school data. And so, if you look at the third column over, tobacco, and we loosely call it E-SIG violations, in 2016, 17, at our high school, we had seven violations. The next year, we had 33, and the year after that, we had 30. And then, I highlighted the, the next two rows, those are pandemic-related. We were either possibly out of school completely, or every other day, that kind of thing, so our, our numbers are not reliable for that. And then, last year, we were fully in school again at the high school, and we had 37. The jump from seven into the 30s was all about flavored tobacco. It was all about it. Very seldom did we find students who were having a traditional paper road cigarette outsmoking. You would also see, and I included the next column over, alcohol chemical violations. So, maybe a little bit of a corresponding jump in those numbers. Just to address then, the second bank of information, Foley Intermediate School data, you would see under tobacco slash alcohol, very few alcohol violations at the intermediate school, almost all flavored tobacco. In 2017, 18, we had three violations, the next year, we had 17. Had the two pandemic years, and then last year, we were back at 17. If you flip the page over to the second page of the document, and if you look down to item number 36, so this is our student handbook, student parent handbook, and it talks about, and directs us with how are we going to address students when, and what kind of consequences would they have if they were using tobacco on school property? First offense is a one-to-two day suspension, the second is a two-to-five, and then subsequent offenses are five-to-10 day. One of the things that, that is embedded in the one-to-two and two-to-five is a reduction in consequence if a parent comes in and if we have a successful meeting with the parent and talk about dangers of tobacco use and that kind of thing. So, you might start with a two-day suspension, we reduce it to one if a parent comes in. So, it's, it's our effort to try to provide an educational component to the student and the parent regarding tobacco use. But it also allows us some flexibility in, in how we consequence kids while trying to also be consistent. That's the information I have for you. I would say, school administrators, principals, superintendents across the state have seen just this, this huge expansion in, in tobacco use in schools. It's not like it used to be where kids are kind of running into the bathroom and having a quick cigarette, and, and everybody knows it, and then it gets reported. It could be in the hallway, it could be in the bathroom, it could be in a locker room. It's, it's just much more prevalent now because the kids have more access to it, and we appreciate your consideration of the proposed policy changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kim Jaden. I'm a family physician in St. Cloud. I am the Medical Director of Community Health and Wellness at Centra Care, and I am your public health medical consultant. I want to start by thanking you for the 2019, a lifetime ago in my world, ban on tobacco sales under the age of 21. You are the ninth county in the state to do so, and the first in our community, and thank you for being a leader in this area. As a family doctor, a parent, and a public health professional, I believe this Board should prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products. These products are directly targeted at youth, as you have heard this morning. As you know, the current flavors of chocolate-covered cherry and bubblegum directly target kids. The candy and fruity flavors, the packaging that looks like toys or candy is clearly targeted. As much of the rest of the community is moving away from starting smoking cigarettes, these companies are working hard to build up their new base of smokers for the next generation. And the youth who smoke and vape are much more likely, as you've heard, to become smokers and vapors in adulthood. I have many patients who started smoking when they were in their youth. I was trying to think of any specifics, and honestly, I can't because I deal with several people a day who started smoking in their teenage years and wish that they could quit now. These people are your constituents, and they really wish that they could quit and they had never started. As you know, you all have friends or family who are dealing with lung cancer, heart disease, any of the multitude of chronic diseases that are caused by cigarette smoking. The addiction is so strong that patients report trying to quit 10 times before being successful. I know there's folks out there who say it's my right to smoke cigarettes if I want to, but I would tell you that when youth's brains are not fully developed until they're 26 years old, we need to protect those brains from addictive substances. Again, I want to thank you for being a leader in the Tobacco 21 work, and I'd be so proud to work for this county and in this community that again is making progressive policy change to prevent youth nicotine addiction. Please move to ban the sale of flavored vape and cigarettes from your county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dani Portevansky. I am the Director of Community Wellness at Centra Care, and I also want to thank you for your time this morning. How did we get here? I just want you to think about that. How did we get here? You've heard a lot about target marketing, you've heard a lot about the adverse health conditions, not only for youth, but also adults. But what does that look like in a community when we're trying to improve our health? Right? So, as we look at, you know, protecting our youth, but also really being a pillar of support to adults who now want to quit, that can look, I would say, a bit stressful on our health system. So, when we look at smoking, it does weigh heavily on our health system, and most times when we look at pediatric ER utilization, specifically in relation to tobacco, most of it can be avoided. We know that in the last or the latest Economic Impact Report, it was estimated that individuals who live 200% below the poverty line spend about $5,000 a year on tobacco. And again, that's $2 million over a lifetime, so, which is quite a lot. But really, $96 billion is what is hitting our healthcare expenditures. You've also heard about smoking-related illness and how that can be avoided, prevented. And we know that that related illness costs more than $3,000 billion a year. 225 of that is really direct medical care costs. That doesn't account for the $156 billion of a loss in productivity for many of, many of our employers in this area. About $6 billion is also lost in productivity for individuals experiencing secondhand smoke. As we talk about exposure, individuals, whether they use traditional tobacco products or vaping products, can also be exposed to secondhand smoke. So, it's important to look at what, what risks are outweighing the rewards there. We know that with the healthcare costs... We know that with the healthcare costs of smokers being forty percent higher compared to that of non-smokers, it is really true that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So I just want to thank you and your consideration for adopting these modifications to really build healthier communities, protect our youth, but also be a pillar of support and adults working to quit and make healthier lifestyles. It really does truly make our community come together a bit closer as a whole. So thank you and your consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Sheila Wheeler, and I have been a resident of Benton County for fourteen years, living in the St. George Township. I've worked at the Foley Public School District for the past fourteen years, and a teacher, as a teacher and a coach for the past thirteen years. I'm here today as a parent of four children, ages nineteen, seventeen, fifteen, and thirteen, who also attend Foley Public Schools. I want to thank you for considering the proposed changes to the Benton County Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance to protect my family and the many other families of Benton County. Youth in particular are especially vulnerable to and impacted by tobacco and its negative health effects, with their brains still developing and their increased curiosity to explore new behaviors or activities. However, this is not a coincidence. For years, the tobacco industry prey on young people since they are the only source of replacement. The tobacco industry has become more, much more clever at luring young people by using all different types of flavors, which you have heard, many of them, the strawberry, kiwi, mint. It is concerning for me as a parent, teacher, and coach to see that these products are being directly marketed to my children, students, and athlete. I know how enticing this product, these products are. Every year, I have a team get-together bonding where the girls have fun activities to get to know each other. During this time, the team, I, excuse me, during this time, I caught two girls using e-cigarettes. This was devastating for me, the team, and themselves. To make the phone call to their parents and the A.D., to have the girls removed from the team get-together was heartbreaking. Not only did those girls have to face all their teammates, knowing that they had let them down, they also lost out on playing time, friendships, and hurt them as an athlete, academic student. When I asked them why, I just said, hey, what would make you do this? And they said, I just wanted to try it. I heard how good the flavors were. I just wanted to try it. I think that more shocking was that the girls met somebody at the park and got the vape to do this was more shocking to me. I'm thankful today that nothing bad came about it because as a parent and coach, I feel that it takes a community to ensure that these students, children are successful in a life without addiction to tobacco, and the negative health consequences and struggle that come with using it should be something this community should rally around. So please rally around the proposed changes to the Benton County Retail Licensing Ordinance to protect my family, other families of Benton County. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joe Melgren. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak before you here. I am a nine-year resident of Benton County, live just outside of Ronaby. I am a parent, a past Health and FIAID teacher, and currently in my first year as the dean of students at Foley Intermediate School. I strongly support the ordinance against the flavored tobacco products and appreciate your consideration. As a parent, my concern is, has been raising my two children. I have a fifteen and seventeen-year-old daughters that both attend high school here in Foley. My biggest concern is, initially was dealing with all of the social media trends, everything internet-related, and from that came all of the influences and the subliminal advertising, and so much as we've talked about how, I'm curious to find out just in this conversation, how much of my Facebook's going to light up with flavored tobacco products here? The, it has been a big topic around our house. We are very strong in terms of our Christian background, as well as our morals and ethical values, and to talk about helping other people lead a healthy lifestyle, and this challenge meets us head-on. In my nineteen years in education, I have worked in the classroom, as well as behind the scenes in the office setting now, and the flavored aspect of things is very, very challenging in terms of the styles, the looks, the varieties of everything that are presented there. Students, a couple of really challenging pieces that I have personally dealt with in the classroom as a teacher, as well as as a coach, flavored bubblegum, strawberry flavor. Students are able to hide things in their backpacks, in their sweatshirts. There's special hidden pockets in clothing, in jackets, in the strings of hoodies where students can hide these items. They actually can take and vape right in the middle of class and blow the vapors right out into their sleeve of their sweatshirt, and you would never know it because they're chewing gum at the same time. So if you come over and you smell it, that's their excuse, and you cannot find it or see it at that point. I have also had some personal incidences where I've had to accompany a student to the hospital who became unconscious as a result of taking some puffs on a device that they had no idea what was in it, what they thought what it was, ended up being something completely different. I also have worked with an individual a few years back that by the age of fourteen, they had already developed masses or spots in their lungs because of how they got started with all of the vaping. That particular student started out with the idea, the curiosities of the flavor, and moved on into the marijuana THC vapes. So very, very, the process of that, very damaging. Excuses that I've heard is that they're a great flavor, they're not smelling like cigarettes, they're safer. We don't know all the health aspects of things. We're learning a lot of new things as the years move forward, as to the health impacts of the flavored vapes, advertising and design, as I talked about, the social media. And we as a community must unite to promote healthy choices for our youth, to help them promote our community as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Brittany Melgren, and I am a senior at Foley High School, and I live in Foley.
And my name's Marley Wheeler, and I also am a senior and live in Foley.
Today, we are going to share some information about flavored tobacco products in Benton County. We strongly support the proposed Benton County Tobacco Ordinance to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products, as we are tired of the tobacco industry targeting our generation and want to protect the health of our classmates and friends.
Thank you for allowing us to come and represent the school. Flavored tobacco products typically cheap in price and come in a variety of youth-friendly flavors that resemble candy, desserts, or fruits. If you look at the picture to the right, many of the flavored tobacco products shown include vape juice, little cigars, chew that look something like what you could find at a candy store. With their bright and colorful packaging, can often be misleading for youth. We have heard many of our classmates say that they use flavored tobacco products because they are better tasting and way less harmful than non-flavored tobacco products. But we know this is not the truth.
The products shown in the photo and the ones that we have here do not look something like the tobacco industry is trying to get older adults hooked on. They are clearly trying to target kids like us. There are thousands of different flavors for tobacco products on the market. Just in this package, there are five different flavors that, Ice Blueberry, Pineapple Express, Mad Mocha, Strawberry Banana Smash, and Passion Fruit.
Many of our peers start vaping without even knowing what's inside them. If we look at the graph on the screen, we can see that about two-thirds of our students using vapes think that their vape is only flavoring. We often hear our classmates say that it's just flavored water vapor. In addition, only thirteen-point-two percent of students who use vapes say that there is nicotine in their vapes, which is highly concerning that many vaping products do in fact contain nicotine, the addictive substance in tobacco products.
The truth is that vapes and many other flavored tobacco products not only contain nicotine, which addicts people to these products, but vapes and other flavored tobacco products also contain many toxic metals and chemicals. Many of these metals and chemicals, such as benzene found in car exhausts, lead found in batteries, and propylene glycol found in paint thinners, are known to cause cancer and irreversible lung damage. The bottom line is that the chemicals and flavors found in these products are not meant to be inhaled deep into the lungs or absorbed into the bloodstream. I'm on the Foley swim team, so take swimming for example. If you get water in your lungs where it does not belong, it could lead to negative health outcomes and even death because of drowning. Using these flavored tobacco products with toxic chemicals and metals is no different. If a person inhales these chemicals deep into their lungs where they do not belong, it could also lead to negative health effects and even death.
There is an overwhelming amount of data that proves that flavored tobacco products cause negative health consequences throughout the entire human body. So why do people start using these products in the first place if they know they're bad for the health? Because the tobacco industry knows how to design and market these products to attract kids like us. I've heard many of our classmates and friends say that we know flavored tobacco products are bad for us, but it's just so hard to quit. The addiction is real.
The tobacco industry has been successful at targeting youth with all types of flavored tobacco products, including hookah, e-cigs, smokeless tobacco, snooze, and cigars, as we can see from the data presented in the graph on the right of the screen. In fact, over eighty percent of youth ages twelve to seventeen who have ever used a tobacco product reported that the first product they used was flavored. In addition, nearly seven out of ten youth who are current tobacco users reported that they use a flavored tobacco product. Contrary to what many people may think, the tobacco industry isn't just targeting youth with flavored e-cigs. They are targeting youth with all types of flavored tobacco products.
Some people may say that flavored tobacco products, especially e-cigarette products, are helping them cut back or quit, but this is simply untrue. The skyrocketing tobacco use rate among youth is no accident, with the tobacco industry spending billions of dollars to get us hooked. The tobacco industry spends eight-point-four billion dollars on marketing each year, and with about one-hundred-and-three-point-three million of those dollars being targeted us in Minnesota. We see flavored tobacco product ads in gas stations, grocery stores, and even social media platforms like Instagram and TikToks. The photos to the right are advertisements me and Brittany have found that are targeting flavored tobacco products that can be found on social media.
Go by association in our school policy is a big fear of athletes, especially for us. Many students do not want to use the bathrooms throughout the day because they are afraid that in the short time they are in there, they will get in trouble because someone else is vaping.
I have heard many people in the school, including myself, say that they have to go all the way to the other end of the high school or even the elementary school just to use the bathroom so they can get away from vaping and not get caught.
Nearly thirty percent of high school students, or one in three, work part-time jobs, meaning that many students have a source of income to afford cheap flavored tobacco products, especially when the cheapest price of a pack of menthol cigarettes in Benton County is six dollars and twenty-eight cents. The average price of a disposable vape in Benton County is ten dollars and twenty-nine cents, and flavored disposable vape starter kits and little cigars like the Swisher set, sweets, are often marketed and sold for only ninety-nine cents.
These low prices make flavored tobacco products accessible to students to be able to afford their addiction. I have had multiple encounters with friends and other classmates say that they would stop using these products if they were not accessible or if the prices were higher. Or, I'm not losing that much money anyways, so what's the harm? In addition, to see the proposed tobacco ordinance that we are here for today, it would also be great to see the Benton County work on a minimum price policy for tobacco products in the future. Every step in tobacco prevention makes a difference.
We want to conclude by saying that youth tobacco use rates continue to rise, and all flavored tobacco products are to blame. We are student leaders as seniors in the high school and can set a good example for the younger classmen. However, we need your help too.
So please, join us and be leaders in the Benton County community and vote yes to end the sale of flavored tobacco products. Thank you so much for your valued time and consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to address the board? I do see we have somebody online from Adams Tobacco Shop. Would you like to address the board?
And they would need to un-mute themselves.
And you'll need to unmute yourself. Do you like to speak to the board? Does the individual from Adams Tobacco Shop wish to speak to the board at this time?
Anybody's unmuted, so.
Okay, anybody else in the audience and/or online wish to speak in front of the board at this time? Last call. Okay, we will now close the public hearing. Jaclyn, you want to come up front, please? I know I've received a lot of emails. Do you have any emails, letters, or other communications you need to read into the record other than the postcards?
Nope, just those one-hundred-and-fifty-one postcards and then the letters of support that you found within your board packet. I think there were twenty-five letters of support we received.
Has the department received any comments or concerns from state agencies, cities, or townships on this agenda item? No? Okay. Okay, at this time, the county board will have time for questions of staff and discussion. As a reminder, the audience public hearing portion is closed. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Mr. Chair, if I could. Jaclyn, just a quick question for you. I was checking my notes from our committee of the whole meetings in regards to Section 700, Subdivision 3B. Talks about tobacco shops that sells flavored products, provide financial records to the county. I'm trying to recall our discussion on that, and I did not find notes on that. I was just wondering if you could refresh my memory in regards to that item. Page ten.
Thank you.
Subdivision 3, letter B.
Yeah, and you know, we have Michelle on board on the call today, so I might let Michelle speak to that piece of the language in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, so this is typical, I believe, tobacco shops, that's a requirement in general that you typically have them show where their sales are coming from. I don't know if it was previously in a different section, and it might actually be a duplication, but it's also included in, I believe, the definition, that they would have to include that information to us to prove that they are a tobacco shop. Yep, subdivision twenty-one, the definition does have that language included, and that again is to prove that they are a tobacco shop and appropriately are allowed to provide those products.
Okay, thank you. Troy, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to add, as Michelle was saying, it's to show that they meet the definition in statute because the definition depends upon their sales and where they come from.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Jac.
Mr. Chair.
That's it?
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Pinsky.
Sheriff Heck, if you could, just for a sec. We never did get to hear from you, and I know you talked at the COW on this, so can you give your side of things from the law enforcement end?
So from a law enforcement perspective, we already do compliance checks, and we've been doing compliance checks based on age of sale. To add another component to this as far as making sure that there's no, you know, there's no flavoring and all the other considerations in here, that's something that is completely within our realm of, a realm of possibility, and we just... and we'd just simply be watching for other things when we go in and do compliance checks. So it, on a personal note, I am also in favor of the change and believe that it's a positive thing to do for the youth of our community.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gepinski.
Uh Jaclyn, um was, was there any opposition to this that you have received?
I did not receive any opposition.
One, one comment from me, then to, then I'll be.
Mariah speak too, because she was doing a lot of the work on this as well. Yeah, so we did get one email um question when we sent out the letter to the retailers notifying them of the public hearing. Just wondering what flavorings were all included in um, in the exemption or in the um proposed ordinance. And then we also did get another question this morning um just about the proposed ordinance, and we're able to clarify that, but no opposition, just only solely questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Gepinski.
I think this would be the last one here. What's really alarming after hearing everybody speak today is the people that are probably in opposition are the ones that shouldn't be doing this right now. So uh to me, that, that, that speaks pretty highly of, of how big of a problem we have at this point. That's all I got.
Commissioner Sloman.
So I understand that the tobacco shop would still be able to sell the flavored products?
Correct, yep. Um the tobacco shop that's licensed currently by Benton County, um that would be exempt from this policy, yes.
Could I, um with Adams Tobacco Shop, could I ask a question? Do you plan on um selling these products?
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Do you plan on continuing to sell the um flavored products?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, and also I put a new machine in my store to check the fake ID and it's under twenty-one each. So they can, they can scan the ID. It shows on the, on the, on the machine it's fake and it's under twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just a quick comment. Jaclyn, Jenny, Mariah, I know you guys were, put a lot of effort into this. I really appreciate your follow-up with board's concerns and committee, the whole discussion. I know that we were heard, and I really appreciate that. You've really put together a great ordinance. Uh with that, I'm going to move to adopt the proposed revisions to the Benton County Retail Tobacco Licensing Ordinance that was provided by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, we get a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I will call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're free to go now.
Well, thank you very much for your support. I appreciate it. Um could we take a picture by chance? That be allowable?
Sure.
Um anyone who would like to be in a photo, listen support, we would love to have that. Yeah, should we go up front here? Um would the board like to be in the photo?
Uh let's, let's us stand on top, please. Yeah, just. You can stand in front of us, we'll stand up and talk.
Oh, okay.
Everyone will have to kind of go on the frontier like us.
Someone wants to claim the rug.
And the shorter people can stand up.
You see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everybody. Great job. You do a great job.
Awesome presentation. Oh, I gotta get the flashlight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
They were very good presentations.
Solid. Them students are really, boy, they, they must have reversed that.
Guys, right?
Will you look at it? Not one opposition.
Yeah, I know.
The next item on the agenda is another public hearing to consider ordinance number four eighty-five, amending Benton County Development Code ordinance number four seventy-seven. Before we'll, before we open the public hearing, we'll first hear from county staff. Roxanne.
Right, give me one second to get this pulled up. Okay. All right, I've got them in the wrong order here. Okay, so the first item that we have before you is ordinance four eight five, uh which amends uh our development code. The development code is ordinance four seven seven. And so the request before you is to amend our shoreline ordinance and to remove the setbacks for structures that are considered sewed. Um and the reason for that is because it has recently caused some confusion amongst residents thinking that the term sewed means that it's connected to either a septic system or to a community system, when in fact sewed means a public, uh, public sewer system. And we don't have any, um, we don't have any structures within the county that are connected to a public system. Um and so in, to be consistent with surrounding counties, we are only going to reference structures in general and ha, and, and reference the um unsewed, but that, that means that it's connected to a septic system. And so this is just a point of clarification. Um we did provide this information to the DNR. They're agreeable to these amendments. Um we did discuss this at the Planning Commission, and the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to move this forward to the county board for action.
Great, thank you. Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak on this matter? Anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak? Last call. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Uh is there any emails, letters, or other communications to be read into the record?
Um and I believe I did provide in your packets the um communication from the DNR stating conditional approval of this request. And basically, once we carry out the action today and publish it in the paper, then the DNR is in support of um this amendment.
Okay, has the department received any other comments or concerns other than the DNR from state agencies, cities, or townships on this agenda item?
No.
Thank you. Any official action required or affected by the townships on this?
Not by the townships, no.
Thank you. Okay, county board now will have time for questions and staff and discussion.
Mr. Chair, as Roxanne said, it's, it's Planning Commission brought it to full county board for their consideration. Unanimous decision there, so with that, I'm going to move to approve ordinance forty-five, amending the Benton County Development Code ordinance four seventy-seven as presented.
Second, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you.
Next, we'll conduct the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider. Give me a minute here, please. I gotta get in my computer. Okay. Uh a minor final plot entitled Hope's Legacy submitted by Alan J. Bowerly. Uh before public hearings, we will hear from county staff. Roxanne?
All right. Uh so this is a four-lot plat. There are two lots on Little Rock Road and then two lots on Ninety-Fifth Street. So it's sort of, it's kind of split up, but according to the county surveyor, this is an acceptable way to do a single plat, even though the blocks are separated out like this. Um so it is four single-family lots. Um they're meeting the minimum size requirements at just over two acres on each lot. Uh there will be right-of-way dedicated, and the highway department has reviewed the access on thirteen. And um, and then Gilminton Township has reviewed access onto Ninety-Fifth Street. Final access will be approved by them at a later date um with the township. That's just general, generally how that uh, that goes. So with that, they've provided septic sites and staff, uh, staff feels that this is an appropriate plat.
Okay, at this time, does the applicant want to come and present what you're seeking to the board? Or you want to do the, the public comment?
Uh, I don't have enough cop drops to get me through ten o'clock, so I'll just be real quick. Got a bad cold, but uh, so yeah, I took basically the corners outside the pivot where the yields are low and, and made it into housing lots because our, our county needs more lots, and I'm hearing there's a big demand for that. So uh that's basically what I've done, and um it should be pretty straightforward, I guess.
Could the applicant, applicant give him his name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Alan Jacob Bowerly. Twenty-one hundred sixty-fifty Avenue, Northeast Suckrabbits.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Does anybody want to address this matter? Anybody online? Anybody else? Final call. Anybody want to address this? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Any questions from the board, Mr.?
Is there any emails, letters, or communications to be read into the record, Roxanne?
Uh the township acted on this on September sixth, uh twenty twenty-two, and, and approved it.
Okay, department received any comments, concerns from state agencies or anything?
No.
Townships?
Gilminton acted on it.
Okay. Now we got questions for the staff and or the applicant if need be.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission reviewed this also with the unanimous decision to bring forward to the county board. So with that, I'm going to move to approve a minor final plat entitled Hopps Legacy and authorize the board chair to sign it.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
No, I just have a comment that as I, as I irrigate and do the same type of farming as this, that it makes sense. This is not as productive land as what some of the others is, and that's part of the farming operation. And it just, it looks like a need to supply the county with a couple of, you know, four lots. So I think it's a great idea.
Great. Any other discussion on this matter? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Roxanne. Next, consider memorandum of understanding from Mississippi St. Cloud Watershed Water Management Planning Process.
All right. Uh so Clear, Clearwater River Watershed District chose not to participate um in this plan. And so with that, Bowser had requested that they be completely removed from the agreement. The agreement stands as it was previously, except for the removal of uh the Clearwater River Watershed District has been removed from that agreement. No other material changes.
Commissioner, Tom?
Well, I, I don't know what's, the Clearwater, they pull a lot of the rum too.
Right.
They don't want to be part of that planning process neither. There's a little bit of concern there because of some of the funding that comes forth, but there's nothing we can really do about it. I mean, they just don't want to participate.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I think some of that may come from, didn't they just recently update theirs in twenty-one?
Right, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you've probably been in more of the conversations, but I think there's a concern that their plan would be secondary to the one watershed, one district plan. So, and, and they don't, they're not comfortable with that.
They're not comfortable with, they don't feel that their projects would be maybe as forefront as what, you know.
Their own specific ones.
Yeah, to their specific, but I don't think that they really understand the way Bowser's going about this, one water, one plan stuff, but there's nothing we can do about it.
Mm-hmm.
Who's the two commissioners that have been serving on this policy? Or has there just been one? It's been you, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yeah, Commissioner Postman and Roman. Yeah, and I'm the alternate, but.
And you're the alternate then on this one? Okay. Okay. Questions, concerns? Commissioner Gepinski?
Nope, I was just going to move to approve the memorandum of understanding. Joint Powers Collaborative signed the MOU and informally appointed Commissioner Johnson to serve on the policy committee.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
It's nice to see you guys didn't waste any time on that, Mr. Chair.
If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Give me a minute here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Stepping up.
Yep. Okay, next, I will now turn it over to the Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll call to order our Human Services Board. Uh it's like we have one agenda item in front of us. Is there any other changes, Bob?
No.
Okay. To approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to approve that agenda item, consent agenda item one. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. Anything else, Bob?
I have nothing.
That's a record on under a minute. Board Chair. We are adjourned.
Great, thank you for that.
Thank you, Bob.
I will reconvene a regular board meeting. Monte, two thousand twenty-one audit exit meeting.
Uh Mr. Chair, uh Cliff and Marsh Allen will not be here today. Misunderstand really mostly on my part. They will be here for your next meeting in October for the audit presentation. That was their intention, so we'll.
Okay.
If you could just move to table that until the next meeting, that'd be great.
So will, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second it then.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so we'll be moved to our October.
They'll be here in our first meeting in October.
First meeting in October, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, adopt the proposed property tax, property tax levying county budget.
All right.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just refer to a summary that you see up on this screen and just cover a few of the items you see on this summary. So the proposed levy, uh then this, this is the result of discussions that occurred in county board work sessions recently. Uh the consensus that was reached at that time was a levy increase of five point four seven percent or one point one million. Um I'm going to jump down then to this bullet point in the middle of the page where it talks about, well, what are the components of that increase? And the largest portion is employee compensation. As I've said many times, county government is a very people-intensive operation, and for most department budgets, the primary portion of their budget is salaries and benefits. So this will cover a general wage increase, uh step increases, longevity increases, and health insurance. So we're, we're looking at a fairly sizable health insurance increase this year. Uh the base budget at this point has a fifteen percent increase. Uh you're going to hear from uh Marsh McLennan on the fourth on our recommended premium increase at that time. Um another big reason is for the two thousand twenty-two budget, we used six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds uh to cover revenue losses. And those revenue losses are primarily GL boarding and then also state aid for roads. And of course, that's one-time money and used in twenty-two, and now we need to replace that with levy dollars. A few things are reducing the levy, some expected increases in human services revenue. Uh debt service is taking a nice bump down as we repay the two thousand seventeen A uh bonds. Couple of things increasing the budget is we needed to fully fund our highway replacement plan. As, as Chris mentioned, the intention is to, uh, in phases, replace two plow trucks over two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four. Of course, fuel costs are going up. It's nice to see fuel coming down, but uh we're still paying substantially more for fuel now than we were paying a year ago. So uh we need to bump up the fuel budget. So all things sold that gets you the one point one million dollars of increases. Bumping back up to a few of the bullet points above, as we heard from our assessor, we're going to see, we're going to see our tax base grow by about almost twenty percent. And uh because of that, uh we'll see actually an additional reduction in our county tax rate, as you see here. It should fall from fifty-four point seven to forty-eight point two eight percent of tax capacity. And that's down from a peak of seventy-seven point seven four percent back in two thousand thirteen. So a continued reduction in the county tax rate. And the next bullet point down is oftentimes I get the question, you know, what's going to be the effect on, on a homeowner? That is usually the question I receive, and, and, and consultation with Brian, our assessor, he tells me that the median, I should say median house value is two hundred and thirty-five thousand in Benton County. median house value is two hundred and thirty-five thousand in Benton County. And with an expected seventy percent increase in market value, we should see the county taxes go up about seventy dollars per year on the, again, the median valued residential homestead property, or about five dollars and eighty-three cents a month. Really not a lot of new stuff in this proposed budget. Actually, just one position, the board heard from our assessor's office of the desire to try and bring more of the assessing work in internal to the county. And so the board agreed to add a staff appraiser position. As I recall correctly, though, about half, about forty-five thousand of that position is offset by the revenue that we receive when we contract with cities and townships for this work. So instead of taking that revenue and paying it out to a local assessor, we'll keep it and that'll be used to help offset the cost of our position. And it's about forty-five thousand dollars. I already talked about compensation benefits using the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And the last thing I just want to mention, Mr. Chair, is that this budget does use about seven hundred thousand dollars of reserves. And and I think, you know, as we observed in the in the work session, that seems prudent and reasonable. Our reserves at the end of two thousand and twenty-one were equal to six point eight months of expenditure coverage, whereas our standard, our goal, is five months, and that's for the general revenue fund. So we're in pretty good shape there with our reserves, and I think the consensus was that that was affordable and reasonable to use seven hundred thousand dollar reserves and bring that levy increase down. And, Mr. Chair, I believe that is it. I, you have the resolution to adopt the levy, the budget, the proposed budget, and the rest of the documents in here are just simply back, you know, more detailed information on the proposed budget levy, which I did not intend to cover, so.
Questions from the board? Commissioner Gopinski? Nothing?
Again, I just have a comment that, you know, it's great to see the tax rate. When I came on the board, it was seventy-seven percent. The forty-eight percent maybe ain't going to be realist, you know, realistic because it's not going to change our standard much of where we sit amongst counties because every county is going to see the seventeen to twenty percent increase in values. So that's not really going to change it. The only thing that can really change our rate amongst counties is controlled spending and reduction of debt.
Yep, so true, sir. Any other commissioners? Okay, what do you want to do? Let's make this in two motions. Take the first motion first?
I believe actually the statute requires us to adopt the levy first and then the budget.
Mr. Chair, I'll make motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-three levy at.
As presented?
At whatever, at five point four percent, is it five point four, increase over twenty-twenty-two?
Do we need a dollar amount in there, Monty?
Excuse me?
Do we need to put a dollar amount in there, too?
The proposed levy is twenty-two million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. And, Mr. Chair, excuse me, Commissioner Pop, five point four seven.
Five point four seven and twenty-two.
It's a five point four seven increase over twenty-two.
And twenty-two million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Okay, we got a motion?
I'll second.
And we got a second. Any further discussion on that one? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that motion carries.
And now the proposed budget.
Yep.
I'll make, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution establishing the proposed two two thousand and twenty-three Benton County budget as presented.
I'm second. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, just as a comment, that is the total amount that we could levy, that number could potentially go down but cannot go up.
Correct. Correct. Thank you for that comment. Any other discussion? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, announce the date and time and place of the Truth and Taxation Public Meeting.
So, Mr. Chair, again, in lieu of a published notice, we're simply allowed to announce this, and this will be put into the record. So if you could please just make that announcement, date, time, and place of our TNT hearing.
Mr. Chair, I.
Go right ahead.
I, that our TNT meeting be December eighth, twenty-twenty-two, at six P M. in the Benton County Boardroom.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for the TNT, December eighth. Any further questions or discussions on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Consider a grant agreement with the City of Sock Rapids to provide American Rescue Plan Act funds to support residential development. Monty?
Mrs. Chair, I'd like to provide a brief overview, but then I would definitely would like to turn this over to our Commissioner Heinen and Commissioner Gopinski, who are very much involved in these discussions with the City of Sock Rapids about this agreement. I know Michelle is with us online as well. So I think, again, the big plan here is is use our American Rescue Plan Act funds to provide incentive or subsidy to developer to help reduce the cost of a lot, to make it more attractive for folks to buy a lot and build a house. And I understood that the the agreement was that the county would provide seventy-five hundred dollars per lot, the city would provide seventy-five hundred dollars per lot for fifteen thousand dollars as this incentive. I believe the the agreement also caps the maximum that the developer can sell a lot for at forty-nine nine, as I recall.
That is correct.
So this agreement was worked out with substantial contribution from Michelle, my assistant county attorney, and Adam Ripple, who is attorney for the City of Sock Rapids. And this was approved, I believe it was a week ago today, by the City of Sock Rapids Council. So you do have the signed version in your packet by, that was signed by the mayor. So at that point, I just turn it over to our board members. Anything you would wish to add or elaborate on, please?
Commissioner Gopinski, you want to add anything other than this has been a long journey? We started this back in Otter Tail?
Yep.
Back in the spring?
I think February, March.
March, correct. So it's been a long process. I'm glad to see this happen personally.
Yes, and just to add on to that, I think, I think the the initial thought of this was going to be to where we could have one agreement, but then start working on other cities and and kind of push this out to to more agencies to see if we could spur more development within the community.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Michelle, are you online there with us?
I believe Michelle is with us.
I am.
Just a quick question, and I'm going to make an assumption here, but I wanted to clarify it with you, that you're probably feeling that this is a fairly good template moving forward with the potential of City of Foley, City of Gilman, City of Rice, et cetera?
Correct. Now, I do want to stress that there's a difference between beneficiary versus a subgrant. So the beneficiary agreements will probably have less requirements. Of course, in this particular situation, it's for sewer and water project, they identified eligible uses, but they are not the final party, so it's a sub award. So I think anytime we have a sub board for broadband project, for sewer and water, where it's actually going to individuals beyond the city, then we can use this agreement.
Great, thank you.
I want to thank you, Michelle, for this, working on this agreement. I know this has been an interesting time for all of us, but I do appreciate your help on this. Commissioner Gopinski?
I definitely want to echo that. I think, Monty, Michelle, Adam, City of Sock Rapids, Commissioner Heinen, I, it was a, it was a team effort, and Michelle, I don't think it's news. I like to move a little faster on things, and I apologize for my initial efforts, we'll call it, our initial efforts, but at the end, we, I believe we're getting it done, and I thank everybody.
Anybody else have anything to add? Concerns, comments?
My only comment would be Commissioner Gopinski and Heinen, thank you for the effort, and Michelle, too, Monty, I know that it took a lot of work in behind the scenes, and I appreciate that. I think it's going to be a great use of our ARPA money to move this county forward in development, so thank you. And it'll be a good template for hopefully our other cities.
Correct. Correct.
I guess my concern is that how long are we going to have the ARPA money available for other cities? You know, we know the Foley situation, they're going to get up and run it on their sewer. But at some point in time, we're going to have to have a deadline or something that they can't come and apply for this ARPA money?
We have to have it legally obligated, like via a contract agreement by the end of twenty-four, so that it's over two years.
Okay, yep. So someplace in there, we're going to have to assume that we have money available if they come. And but we, I mean, twenty-twenty, end of twenty-twenty-four, we're going to have to have either something or we're going to have to spend it prior to that.
That is correct.
You've got to come in the whole coming up in October, too.
Right.
Let's review on ARPA and see where we're at.
Yep.
I, I think after today, and everyone starts hearing what we did with City of Sock Rapids, I'm assuming other cities are going to come forward relatively soon.
And and I can add, to my understanding, City of Gilman was rejected their first round of funding for their project, so.
Oh, really?
Rejected? That's too bad.
So I'm quite certain we're going to be hearing from other cities, and rightfully so.
And and actually, I want to hear from other cities.
Yep, absolutely.
This is what this is made for.
But Monty's right, we've got that call coming up in a few weeks. That'll be a great time to establish some of that.
And someplace in there, we'll get a report back on, from the city, on what, how many lots benefited from this and all the other stuff.
Correct, yep. They'll have to report all of that stuff.
Do you have any idea right now how many are ready to, ready to roll? If you had to guess?
I believe it was in that twenty-four.
Twenty-four, I believe, yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this matter? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, the City of Sock Rapids Legal Fees to Review ARPA Agreement Discussion.
So, Mr. Chair, I understand that at the meeting on Monday night, the City of Sock Rapids voiced a desire for the, for the county to help cover the legal fees that incurred in the development of this agreement. And I asked for and received from the City of Sock Rapids the invoices that they had received from Rinkie Noonan, and as you see, I have the amount totaled just a little bit over seven thousand dollars. I was not there for that meeting, I believe Commissioner Gopinski was, so perhaps if you'd like to elaborate on this issue, please.
So when I was at the meeting, a few of them caught me off to the side and basically, you know, said, you know, our attorney's fees are over and above that, obviously they're going back and forth, and and what the whole wishes of everybody was to have one basic agreement that we could follow through with other cities and towns, and basically on the the same kind of aspect, the subsidy for building homes or lots and infrastructure. And one of the things that they brought up is like, well, now that this master agreement is done, it's going to be a lot easier for the Cities of Rice, Cities of Foley, Gilman, whoever else comes on building these, we've got a template that they can just use. And what they were wondering is, is if if we could do something with the legal costs or spread them out with the other cities to help alleviate this pain. I see where they're coming from. I mean, because now we work through, as Michelle knows, the the heartache of a lot of different things to where we have, we have a set, we're not a, we've got a template to go off of, which in the end is going to make things a lot easier for other cities moving forward.
Michelle, I would like, I would like to hear from you, please.
Yes, to be clear, the agreement that we finally used was not an agreement drafted by Rinkie Noonan. That was an agreement that other counties had used.
Right.
That I modified to suit Benton County's needs. The agreement that was, for, by the city originally was deficient and did not cover a lot of the requirements of the ARPA funding. So I don't know that, at the end of the day, that they did much with that master agreement.
Michelle, I have a question, and I don't think you're going to be able to answer this, but I need to ask it anyway. When we go into further agreements, we'll just use Foley as an example, they're going to have to send this off to their attorney to to check it over and everything. Do you have an idea of what kind of a cost they're going to incur?
I don't. And the thing is, is any contract that we have, a lot of them have other attorneys checking over stuff.
Right.
Any agreement that we have was to be, you know, both of us are working on together. So I, I, you know, the cost of doing business, it's the cost of getting these funds. You know, you have to put together an application, you have to come to terms on an agreement. That's just part of the process.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
I see this as a cost of doing business to the cities, and I, therefore, I am not in support of this item.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Gopinski?
Michelle, would you, would you, in your opinion, would you, would you say that it's a lot easier for other cities to move forward with something like this versus starting from scratch again?
Oh, well, it was kind of our side, how we started from scratch. So we had to come up with an agreement like we do for a lot of places. I would, we put forth the agreements that we have, they're kind of standard for road projects. We come up with that master agreement, and then it's much easier, but it's the product. You know, they're still benefiting from the product that's been created by the county. So cost of business, yes, will benefit, but there's always that first contract, and yeah, again, I would say that they didn't draft that agreement. It was drafted by this office based off other counties.
Mr. Chair, one more comment, if I could. Basically, I just want to throw this out there that that I don't think this whole process was a hundred percent known until we made steps moving it forward. And therefore, I think it did cost everybody some additional money, including, including the county.
Yeah.
You know, and and I think we worked through a lot of challenges along that way to make this template, whether that's, you know, built by Michelle or not, I think it's going to make it a lot easier moving forward. And I don't think the the City of Sock Rapids was looking for the money back this way. They they wanted to throw out options where maybe the other cities could share in this if they ended up getting some, some support in this, in this line. So there's options, is what I'm trying to throw out.
I, I just don't feel I want to get into that with the results that other cities may come then, and it'll be an unending thing. And what if we run into some long-foreseen legal cavities that the bill is higher? I, I think it's something that the county should probably stay out of. It's just the cost of doing business. Every city has that part.
Any other discussion on this item? I, I assumed it would have been an easier process, and I will not speak for Commissioner Gopinski, but I was hoping it would have been an easier process, but we got very educated very quickly on some of this stuff.
Well, I, I'm going to make a motion to approve this agreement.
I'm sorry, the agreement was already approved? This is a discussion and possible action of reimbursement for the City of Sock Rapids?
The, I am making a motion to approve the reimbursement to Sock Rapids.
Dollar amount?
The seven thousand, I believe it was. Hold on here.
Seventy-seven thousand and twenty-four dollars.
Yep.
Okay, I'll second that. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Mr. Chair, I'm hearing and understanding Commissioner Pop's concerns. Quite frankly, I share some of them. I also understand Commissioner Gopinski's idea of reimbursement to Sock. I'm wondering if it behooves us to, you know, this is a fairly minimal amount of money right now to, for reimbursement if we wait until we get through this project and see where we end up with some of our other cities. I'm not necessarily opposed to helping reimburse Sock Rapids, but I think Commissioner Pop's right. We don't know where this is going to lead us just yet, and maybe we're in a better position at the end of our ARPA period to possibly address this with any and all cities that have approached us. That's just a thought, because quite frankly, I understand both opinions, and I can appreciate both the opinions. And if I had to vote today on it, I'd probably vote no because of that. So I just throw that out there as a discussion.
Yeah, it's way too early to start that. I agree with you on that.
Actually, I would have to agree with that. Because as we get closer to two thousand and twenty-four, where we're going to be, knowing where we're going to be with our ARPA.
The other part I look at a little bit is that it's a benefit to Sauk Rapids. And it's gonna be a benefit to other cities, and if they don't wanna do business for the benefit of their city and pick up some of the costs, then why are we doing business?
Yeah, it is also a benefit to the county.
And, and a benefit to the county, but, you know, the county, we just happen to have our own attorneys on. You know, we don't have to, I mean, we have to pay Michelle.
And in all respect, Michelle, that, they're not free either.
They're not free, right, so, I mean, you know.
We could turn around and send the bill to the City of Sauk Rapids for Michelle, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Sorry.
I, I, I actually like Commissioner Johnson's thoughts on this, because getting down the road might throw a little bit more light on everybody's legal expenditures moving forward, and who knows? It could be, it, it could be a lot less for other towns, it could be more. So, I, I, you know, maybe tabling this thought until we get a little bit further into this would be good, but keeping that option open.
Okay, go ahead, Monty, you've got something on your mind?
No, just.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Schlangen?
Monty, if we were to reimburse these funds, where would they come from?
I think it would be appropriate to use ARPA funds. I mean, it's all part of this ARPA project. And I think it's appropriate to use it to support the administrative implementation costs of an ARPA project, so it could come from there, I believe, yes.
Okay.
So, I, I would say we can look at it later and see where we're standing on the ARPA funds.
Mr. Chair, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I'm trying to, trying to speak before I cough again. So, that is correct, Commissioner Pop. We have a motion and a second on the floor that we have to act on first before we can, uh, move forward on this. So, any further discussion? If not, I'm gonna call that question on our motion. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. I'll call the question again. All in favor, say aye. Motion fails. Now, Commissioner Kapinski?
Nope, I, uh, just the comment is, I think Commissioner Johnson came up with a great idea, and I think, uh, I think seeing this through would, would be the right thing to do.
And I would have to agree. Okay.
So. Uh, if I could, Mr. Chair, then maybe I will make a motion to table this item for future discussion. I don't know that we set a date today, but we'll have a future discussion on ARPA funds for potential refunds.
Table it in definitely.
We'll table it, yep, definitely.
I'll second that. And I will try and capture all those thoughts and convey those to the City.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? I actually do like that. Motion. If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries, thank you. Joint meeting with Benton Economic Partnership Executive Board.
So, Mr. Chair, just as a reminder, back during its goal-setting session, the board expressed a desire to have a a joint meeting with the Benton Economic Partnership, uh, Executive Board. Uh, so, in discussions with Amanda Othout, the Director, uh, it was decided that it was best to, um, meet with the BEP Board after their October, uh, meeting, so that'd be October twenty-seventh. So, um, Amanda asked me to ask you, um, do you have any particular topics, subjects that you would like to address and to discuss with the BEP Board as we come up with an agenda for that, that meeting? Anything comes to mind you'd like to include?
Monty, or Mr. Chair, there was a lot of discussion from Amanda and some of the board members at the last Thursday's meeting. She's gonna be very brief, she's got, um, a lot of things that are not gonna be because it's gonna be a public hearing, or it's gonna be an open meeting, the commissioners are there, so, um, I don't, you know, if we're gonna have things that are prevalent to privileged information, she's not gonna go that route, so. I, they were, she was a little confused in what we're really gonna discuss.
I think it's just about having a conversation with them, 'cause we as a board as a whole has never had.
Contribution, yeah, yeah.
You know, and we are giving them a lot of money.
Right, yep.
Per year, so.
But I mean, as, as a board, we shouldn't expect a whole lot of information, I guess, to come forth. Yeah, I'm thinking a great topic is, of course, is what you just acted on, the Sauk Rapids agreement. I'm also thinking broadband, that'd be another great topic to talk about. What's been going on with broadband, that's a big deal. If I could just toss out a couple.
That'd be great, Monty.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Maybe, uh, what Amanda put together for our DC, the economic impact.
Yeah, and she went, she went through all that. She shot twenty-nine quarter, yeah, that whole, that whole thing, okay, yep.
And maybe she could just speak a little bit on, um, I, I keep going every time I get an opportunity, this recruitment that Brainerd.
Business recruitment.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's absolutely huge for the, the members of the BEP, as well as the county and everybody, so.
She might, I might suggest she would give you an update on what's going on with the loan program. You may remember the board allocated additional five hundred thousand to the loan program, so it might be good to kinda hear, hey, is that starting to generate some interest?
Okay, I think we've got a few things. That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you, Monty. Okay, now, Commissioner, meeting updates. I usually go left to right, next meeting right to left. So this time, I'm back to right to left. Commissioner Schlangen? Just so you know, that's how I do it, and that's how I've been doing it, if you haven't noticed. That's a lot of paperwork.
Let's see what I got here. Okay, we went to the, um, file policy conference. Do you wanna have any updates on that, or just working on trying to finalize things for the end of the year?
Anything else?
I'll just. I listened in on the Central Minnesota Inclusive Workforce, the IWE presentation on September fourteenth. I just listened in on it. Have anybody have any questions about it? Mind and Township meeting. They're looking at a festival, Harley-Davidson Festival, um, in October. Eighth, eighth, I think they were going? Somewhere between the eighth and the twelfth, anyway. Oh, no, it's the eighth, from twelve to four P.M. They had a land, land split. Was approved, and not a whole lot else. We went on the, um, sewer and water tour, that was interesting. And then the Career Solutions Board meeting on the eighth, did we go through that one yet? Whenever they have, they're changing around their funds in for their accounts that they have, so that it's appropriate for uses and easier to manage. One of the things they did, anyway. Then we had the criminal justice meeting. They've been working on a mental health project for increasing response to needs. Their rule twenty evaluations are being done virtually. They're doing screenings and incident reports. Court administration. They're working on, um, better communication and getting, their, their cases have been going through pretty decent. I think that was it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Okay, Mr. Chair, in light of the time, I'll make this very brief as I can. September sixth, Commissioner Kapinski and I and Amanda attended the Gilmanton and Mayhew Lake Township Board meetings to discuss, uh, their support and potential financial consideration towards our broadband initiative, and I think I can report that they were, uh, very the word I want, yeah, successful, thank you. Uh, September eighth, our broadband subcommittee met, we updated on grants and, uh, different providers. Uh, Extension Committee meeting, uh, we were able to, uh, be introduced to new staff for horticulture and small farms, local foods, and I understand that there's maybe a proposal out now for the crop educator waiting on a response from that. Of course, the soil and water conservation tour was interesting. The AMC conference, uh, I attended the Policy Committee for Transportation. Did have a TRICAP Financial Committee meeting, uh, last week, and, uh, we do not meet monthly as an executive board, but we do try to meet at least monthly, uh, to review the previous month's finances, so that took place. And then I was able to attend the Foliary Care, a monthly meeting. Um, just a reminder, the Touching Tables event is coming up, and I apologize, I didn't write this date down, so I'm gonna look it up right now. I believe it's the twentieth, um, at noon at New Life Church here in Foley. Um, and so I will be hosting our table as commissioners, so if you, I don't know if you know now, today, if you're all able to attend or not, uh, but if you could please verify with me and let me know that, I'd appreciate it. That's all I have.
Did we verify if there was that transportation meeting? I think we gotta, we gotta look at that. I think there's a transportation meeting on the twentieth. I'll take a look at that.
Uh, seven W?
Seven W.
I got an email yesterday, seven W is scheduled for October twenty-eighth, Friday at nine thirty.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Commissioner Pop? Oh, I'm sorry, are you done, Commissioner?
I am, thank you.
Well, I can start out, we had, uh, if you went to the AMC and, you know, the, the policies ones are probably for commissioners on your, your policy group that you're, we had two topics in the morning. One was with, uh, increase in values across the state, which was really good. I thought that that was, um, kinda spelled out, 'cause a lot of commissioners get the questions, oh, my taxes are going up fifteen percent 'cause property values went up fifteen percent, so they had a panel discussion of a couple commissioners, uh, the Commissioner from the, um, Revenue, Commissioner of Revenue was there. And then we had, we also had from election fraud was there, and that was quite interesting, uh, Commissioner. Schmazing was on it at the end, and, and it was worth just the two cents to hear his two comments, because a commissioner before him was from Dakota County, former state senator, uh, out of that county, and, you know, and I reached over to Commissioner Johnson, and I said, that's why they don't get anything done in St. Paul. You know, after you listen to her, so that was up and out. Then I had, uh, uh, Library, we had Library Board meeting, we did some policy cleanup. Nothing really changed as far as the budget goes, the surplus is running about three hundred and twelve thousand ahead of last year, so that'll be pushed into the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, we don't know what the Library Relief Fund is gonna be yet, that usually don't come out till either the end of September, the first part of October, so hopefully that's an increase from the state. They don't, they never seem to know, um, it depends, there's a lot of factors that go into it. Um, and then we had the Rum River One Water One Plan for the, for the Rum River on Thursday. Got a lot of things done to clean it up, we got, um, we'll be getting the presentations on what we need to adopt, and when I get it, I'm supposed to just send it out to use, it's more of a formality. Um, and we can just have it on the consent agenda, there's no sense going through it. We did have to hire a legal. We gotta go outside and hire a legal fee, we tabled that because of cost. A lot of this is being ate up in staff and legal services, and when it comes to, um, the actual, you know, it's like one or two point one million for two years. The actual dollars that are gonna be put on the ground, I question somewhat, whether, how much is actually gonna get there? I mean, they're already mounting staff time for money they don't have, because they haven't got it until everybody, all the counties get their legal stuff done, so. I don't know, you know, at some point in time, maybe, um, somebody needs to sit down with Bowser and have a discussion. We wanted to know how the ones that have been done for two years, how they're doing, how they're getting, but nobody seems to know how much money's actually getting done. So, whether it's gonna be good or bad, you know, um, Soil and Water was there with a couple reps too, and they had the same concerns that a lot of them did, so. That was it. Uh, I think that was all that, that I had. The two-hour practice was good, um, a little shorter than other years.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Okay, uh, Commissioner Johnson already reported on the Mayhew Lake Gilmanton Township meetings. Um, obviously, we had our budget meetings in, in there as well. Uh, St. Cloud APO, uh, meeting, we, we went through the regional transportation priorities for two thousand and twenty-three. Hypothetically, there, there was, there was a lot of conversation on wages, and, uh, if we don't have this APO, we don't get funding. That's why we get, it really comes in at like three point five million dollars or something like that. After wages, it's about three million dollars that gets dispersed between projects within our area. So, if we don't have the APO and pay those wages, we don't get that three point five million dollars either. So, so there was a lot of conversation on that. I think at the end, it was, uh, uh, it was all good and everything passed. I was not able to make it to the Alexandria, um, AMC meetings due to putting together stuff for, um, the DC trip. We did, uh, have the MICA meeting, the, uh, the, the biggest, the biggest thing that came, I mean, there was a lot of things in there, but I thought at the end it was kinda, uh, funny.
Increase, and they're gonna increase the, the membership.
Mm-hmm, yes, but they also came back and said, everybody wants to do in, in-person meetings, but they scolded everybody for not being in person. So, you know, so.
We don't have any choices this, in October.
Yeah, it's, it's virtual in October again, and, and, uh, I, they only had a handful of people there.
No, it's not virtual in October.
No, they said they were going virtual in October again.
I must've missed that, 'cause I thought it was either you come in October or you don't go.
Oh, really? I, I took it as it was gonna be virtual again.
Okay.
You'll just have to have some more clarification.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, let's see here, we had a couple broadband meetings in there that I think, uh, Johnson already reported on. Uh, we did put together a book, and I wanna put, throw out a special thank you to Chris and Beth and Monty for doing some staff time on this. Um, without their help, this was not gonna happen. There was a lot of work that went into this. Uh, there was a lot of work and went into, I mean, I don't even know how many letters of support we got.
Fifteen.
Fifteen letters of support, which included all of Central Minnesota, basically. So, copy of this book is right here. Um, I did, we did share it with, uh, with the other commissioners today. Um, but I think Commissioner Hyden, this went over very well.
It was a very interesting trip in DC.
Yeah.
Learned a lot, once again, uh, meeting with all the senators, the, uh,
Representatives.
Representatives.
It was, it was, uh, a lot of walking, but, uh, it was, it was weird because you don't know what to expect. And if you, if you look at all of the, um, counties and organizations that are out there during this, they go every year. And it's like this, almost like a big secret. You don't tell anybody, because they get things done, and it might be every three years they get something, but you go out there for three years and then you get ten million dollars of funding, it, it's the old saying, sometimes you gotta spend money to make money. Um, so, it, we got our feet wet, as I'll tell you that, and, and a lot of good conversations. A lot of, a lot of the, um, um, people we met with said we did our, we did their homework for them. When we brought this book, they're not used to getting that. So, other than that, that's, there was a lot of, a lot of things that went into it, and, and I thank the board for allowing us to go out there. I know I talked to, uh, Monty right before the meeting about Commissioner Persky's request from the APO about getting either myself or Commissioner Hyden back out next month with the APO trip to DC. And I, I asked him to work with Brian to see if they had the, if they could cover the costs in the APO side of things, so. That's really what I had, oh, the other thing that came up is, you know, Oh, the other thing that came up is, you know, we really should look at potentially some lobbyists in the future. At least look at the cost and see what that, what people get out of it and what those costs are. Because I think the people that have lobbyists have a lot better closing rate.
Yeah, and that's the larger counties.
Right, I was gonna say, like, Stearns don't even have a lobbyist.
Yeah, they do. Stearns and Sherburne both do, you know. But once again, just, I'm sorry, you.
Nope, keep going.
Once again, about the DC trip, I found out that if you're there in present, they get to know you. Okay, versus an email.
Yeah.
You know, learned a lot, really did a good pitch for our projects. We will not know for a year or two. You know, and that's just normal, unfortunately. Lot of walking, it was very hot. And I am tired of going through security with my shoulder. Because I got nothing but.
He held us up every time.
Every time.
Always gotta be one, doesn't there?
Three times a day going through security, just, you know, so literally I wore nothing. Well, I'm sorry, pants and a shirt and that's it. Because I got patted down all the time.
With that said, I do believe that our presentation to everybody we met with was very solid. And everybody had a, had a, had a part in that, all the way down to Ross with the city of Sauk Rapids. I think, I think Chris covered the roads really well out there. You know, Commissioner Heinen, we played off each other. And, and things went, went very good for not knowing how things should work. So we were the newbies out there.
From what you hear though, is with the new allowable earmarks, it should be faster than the old way.
Yep, they were just setting us up to let us know that this could be a year to two-year timeframe instead of saying, we'll give you, give you an answer in three months, you know. But no, it was very good. I do thank Chris too. I also sat, sat in on the twenty-three coalition with Congressman Staub about moving forward from Foley to Malacca. That was a very interesting conversation too. And I was on vacation actually before that. So I got out of vacation and I went from
To DC.
One world to a different world.
Mr. Chair, one other comment on that trip to DC. There was, was it two or three different legislators that, that when we talked to them, they said they would, they would be actually in favor of coming and looking at that.
So in October, right, so in October, there's three of them. Senator Smith, Senator Klobuchar, and Tom Ammer. They have offices in the area and apparently the representatives will be here in October. So we're gonna try to set up a meeting with them.
Them themselves will be here?
Them and their assistants, correct. And we're gonna try to set up a meeting with them and do a tour of what we're, what we're dealing with, you know.
Good.
Going down to Vision Street at the worst possible time.
That is correct. There'll be, there'll be two visits, one at eight o'clock or seven thirty in the morning. Next one will be about three o'clock.
The, the nice thing is, is people do know about St. Cloud being ranked at one of the worst cities in America to drive. And the people we met with concur. So this project actually resonated with a lot of people and.
May help that situation a little bit.
You know, and then you got Sherburne County, you got Stearns County all backing it. You got the APO, the airport, I mean, every, every city. So it was, it was definitely well taken, well taken out there.
Yep, very informational. Okay, comments by commissioners. Chris, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're in the back room. I had a lot of calls about signs.
Yeah, me too.
Can I have an explanation, please?
Yeah, we were getting calls too. And we were getting complaints that political signs are either blocking the views or people don't like seeing them out there. And so there is a state statute that says any advertisement of any kind is prohibited in public road right-ofway. Different cities allow things to be in their, their right-ofways. So we, not last week, but the previous week, we did just spend a day cleaning up any signs that were in the right-ofway. Some signs were, were close to the edge and I think some of our, our remaining staff just moved them to where they knew was outside of the right-ofway line. But I think a lot of them were the ones that are right next to the roadway at street corners and things like that did get picked up. And we have those at our facility. And we've had a number of individuals want to come and pick those up. And they weren't just political signs either, I'll add that. These are need a new roof or siding, lose weight fast, those kind of signs. All those kind of advertisement signs that were kind of cluttering up the, the county road right-ofways did get picked up.
Mr. Chair, if I could comment on that, in my opinion, and that Chris can concur, this belong, as far as the political end of it, responsibility is on the candidate.
Right.
It is, that is correct.
We had a conversation when I was placing my signs and I had to have a conversation with the Cilea Foley because their setbacks were different.
Sure.
So it's on the candidate. They need to make sure their signs are put where they need to be.
And we understand, sometimes it's the, they have campaign staff that, that they're not out there. The actual candidate isn't the one putting out the sign. So they may not even know where their actual sign got, got placed, so.
Yeah, and the other part is if the candidate reads, you know, local candidates read their election stuff, it says right in there.
Says, it's very specific.
Very specific, not to place it. So I, I had calls from a Pacific School Board member that.
I just wanted to address that with you, Chris.
Yeah, and we don't discriminate, so red, blue, green, any color, we pick them all up. So at best, maybe we made every candidate mad.
If you got any of those lose weight fast, can you send one over?
You'll take one of them, huh?
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Kapinski?
I got one more, one more note. I, out there talking with Commissioner Clark from Stearns County. I, I put myself in a position where I think I took the last spot on NICO Broadband Committee.
Great.
And we'll see, we'll see if that's great. But I think it's gotta go through. I think it's, it shows pending right now, but there was one spot left and, and.
I'm glad you answered that, Commissioner Kapinski, because if I recall correctly, at our policy committee meeting, there were three at that time.
Yep.
Positions open.
Oh, really?
Yep, so they've narrowed her down.
Oh, yeah, and Mr. Clark was there and we actually talked about you.
Oh, really?
Broadband.
Yeah, she, she approached me and I'm like, oh, yeah, I suppose and.
What's one more committee?
Yeah, there you go.
Tim, just for you, Commissioner Kapinski's our broadband guy. He knows this stuff inside and out. We don't.
I think our whole committee is learning broadband. So I gotta give Commissioner Johnson, Monty, everybody a lot of credit. We gotta, our Bang Up Broadband Committee, I'm gonna tell you that right now. Everybody's learning.
Okay, anything else in our comments by commissioners, concerns? Okay, sec media, the whole meetings.
Mr. Chair, we don't have anything new for you. I do have one event that we wanna make sure we ask you about, and that is the CARES Touching Tables. Should we register everyone for that, or RSVP everybody? That is October twentieth at noon. And it's at New Life Church. And we'll make sure we register everybody for that event. Yep, noon, October twentieth. Other than that, well, I know we have a committee hold tomorrow. We'll see for that at nine. We don't have a packet of materials, it's various highway issues. And Steve Stang will lead off with a discussion about cybersecurity practices in place. So that's tomorrow morning at nine.
Okay, motion, set committee of the whole?
We don't have anything new.
You don't have nothing?
No.
Motion to. Just information then?
Yep.
Okay, motion to adjourn. We're adjourned at ten.